Thank you all for being here tonight for our regular council meeting, August 27th, 2015. Everyone would please stand for the list of communication and place to play. Dear the Father, we thank you for this day and for all that you've done for us. We thank you for the opportunity and the ability to be here. Thank you for the measure of health that you've given to us. Thank you for the work that you've done in the life of Councilmember Manning this week and his family. Thank you for that. We know you're in control. We just ask that you would lead, guide, and direct everything that we say tonight, everything that we do, be to move our city forward and to honor you. Again, we just ask your blessings upon everyone. Jesus therefore.
I pledge my allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janet, put the roll call, please.
Mary Lynn.
Here.
Pastor Mary Grabett.
Here.
Councilmember Fagel.
Here.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Stoll.
Here.
Anderson City Manager Quaid.
Here.
City Attorney.
Alex McVey for Elmore. Gentlemen, first, you have an opportunity to review the items in the consent agenda. Be the minutes for the August 13th Agenda Work Session, as well as the regular council meeting at the same date, the July 2015 Treasurers Report, and the Declaration of Surplus Program. We will entertain a motion. Quick motion. Have a motion to approve and a second. Roll call, please.
Pastor Mary Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fagel.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mary Lynn.
Yes. At this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. I don't know if we had anybody who signed in down there or not. If you didn't sign in, we will get to you anyway. All right. We have, okay, okay, Archibald.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Archibald, Thursday, 31st. I have a situation I've been trying to have the last few months with all the situations and stuff that's been going on. I thought about a program to attend. It involves litter, trash, garbage, on Black Hawk Trail, the Ringo Road, the Arden Trail. In the last year of the year, I picked up three packages of hamburger meat. Eight been opened, two of them just a package, got half, another case in a plastic grocery bag, two of them cases, a plain package of bacon. Why would you pay for whoever does it? Do it. I don't know. But if I didn't keep the paper, the trash, and the litter picked up, it would be a garbage heap. I know there's garbage all over the city, the county, the state, everything. And I know there's difficulty in probably trying to enforce it. I have heard the people who have thought about it, one is up on the clerk, and one is the cop on Black Hawk, and they handled it, give license tags and everything. And I know it's not a situation you can enforce too much, but I thought of an idea of the out, a banner across, make a couple of way there in for a time as a PR promotion, that pride of these streets, don't litter or whatever. And I have called in with a question, don't litter or sign on either side of Black Hawk, coming off Ringo Road and going to the Ringo Road, hoping that that would help. And one other issue there, power outage last storm, then saw a casualty tram, cut a tree down, coming off Ringo Road, and that the cutting there, asking them to come back the next day or two and clear that out. But on the inside of the curb, they left a big part of the tree. One, it's unsightly, two, it could present a problem, but hoping litter or something, or somebody had to run off that road, which they have in the past and get future. And I have reported in, and I was hoping asking them not to come back and get it.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we look into the true?
I look notes, and we'll follow up on that first thing in the morning.
I think that's a good idea, about the banners, having one on each end, you know, help keep East Ridge clean, please don't litter, or something along those lines. I think that'd be great. I agree. Because where I live, right behind, right close to the fast food joints, I hear a lot of people chucking stuff out the drive, out their window.
Is that a more motion?
No, this is just for general discussion.
Well, I, you know, I agree. I think it would be good to have that kind of thing. It's really, really frustrating, all the things that you see that goes on. Litter is just, it's one of those things that, you know, it just amazes me that if people can't just throw their trash in the garbage bag, I mean, the garbage can, why does it have to go out on the side of the road?
And as far as the meat's concerned, first thing that came to my mind, and this won't sound terrible to say, but it sounds like maybe someone, that there may be a dog issue there, and someone may have put some frozen meat and wanted to get rid of it or something. So, you know what I mean?
Yes, Father.
Yes, sir.
Out of cell, phone tower, there often Ringo Road, there's a lady in the past has been feeding dogs, and prior, dog handler he was on the case all the time. When you go by there now, it'll be two feet above there and playing. And in the past, we have had a cow or something, not seeing a crossroad. Have something like that out there, wild land, land, problem, that's true, but talking about, don't think all these kind of people out there could have, had, had, of course, every damage.
Yeah. Thank you.
I wouldn't end with you, Mr. Grabett, I thought.
No.
If that's gonna be a motion now, one second.
No, I certainly appreciate that.
I would, I would, I would like to, to do that.
I think it'd be in the form of a motion.
Think it necessarily has to, but, but, I mean, it probably wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to show Councilman for.
Well, I will put that in the form of a motion, then. There you go, Mr. Grabett.
You have a, you don't have to sign, mark, place that, as they put up the article, that's a question. They'll clean up quick, they'll clean up quick. We already got that, you're invited, you want that in the park?
Well, I think that's also, someone may know better than I, but that may be what the Judge Hilton's community service program, they may be helping out with doing some of that on the litter pickup, I don't know.
That would be good.
Yeah, that would be good. I know they've been working down at Camp Jordan.
And I'd like to go, you have to remind my memory, what day is it when we call the park?
For the creek?
Creek, yeah.
It's October 3rd, I think it's, it's the date this year for the Spring Creek Clean Up, but there's also something that you took off. I think this year, though, is not actually, Larry Clark was here the last time, said it wasn't actually gonna be in the park this year, it's gonna be over towards ships.
Yeah, but he said you were going back around by the right.
Yeah, right.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, they will, again, we will be in the park, and they'll be, they'll be leading that, Jim Ledbetter, who always does, remember last year, clean the creek out. They will be over there, his bunch, over there on the same day, cleaning the creek out.
So, it's just two separate?
Two separate at the same time, always. It's a river rescue or whatever.
Okay, fantastic. The more the better. All right, so we have a motion and a second for the, for the banners that would simply have a message, something like, take pride in these streets, don't litter. We have the roll call, please.
Pastor Mary Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fagel.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mary Lynn.
Yes. All right, do we have another citizen who wants to bring a question, concern, comment to the council? This would be your opportunity to do so. All right, that's eaten up. So, we will go to communication with council members. Mr. Manning.
Uh, not at this time, sorry.
Mr. Stoll.
Do what you're saying.
I know I heard you here, because you kept waiting.
Uh, but you're, you're here with us. That's it.
All right. Mr. Grabett. I, I don't really have anything, just a suggestion here, don't want to step on anybody, but we have a presentation here tonight that is on down the schedule here, could, would anybody, I'm just moving that up, so we don't have to, people that want to do this, these presentations, let's get them out of the way, or not have them to interfere with city business. And I think, I think that'll be a practice from now.
Absolutely, and actually Janet came over to remind me that they're here to do a presentation, we talked about that very thing. Thank you, yes, sir, for bringing that up, and we will definitely do that if there are no objections. Okay, we will move up to presentations. Mr. Grabett, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Fagel.
Uh, none.
Okay. Haven't anything at this time either, but we'll look to our, Mayor City Manager, Chief Williams.
I would like to ask the Chief Reed to come forward, I believe he's got a couple now, I'll see if I can.
Councilman Manning. One of the things that I do on regular basis, I ask him, City Manager Williams, if he could stand up and give that name. And usually, he knows I've got something that must leave over in my arm. I received this letter, August 24th, 2015, from the United States Department of Justice, Eastern District of Tennessee, William B. Kenny, if most of you know him. Dear Chief Reed, my office was recently notified by the Office of Justice Programs, OJP, of the award of a physical year, 2015, at Woodburn, a moral justice assistant degree, Jack. In the amount of $10,511 to the City of Eastern Police Department to purchase computer mounting kits, with in-car laptops for the city police vehicles. I want everybody to know that we, we've made a pretty good charge on this project, that really helped tremendously. We have 14 brand-new laptops sitting in the office, 14 brand-new mounts to go with that for the cars. Those computers leave out 91, and they go to THP Headquarters in Nashville to have the Titan Crash Software installed on, and zero cost. We should have a back Thursday. I've been online with Chattanooga PD and IT people, they're trying to schedule to get us uploaded on another portion of our software, which, by, by those folks stepping in and helping us out, we're gonna be looking at seconds on our purchasing of the software, somewhere around as little as 35, as much as about $4,800 on that. So, I just wanted to let Council know about that, that good news that you did.
Do some. Thanks, sir.
I've got one more, one more announcement. We've got a police officer that has, has turned in his paperwork, will be retired for, Bruce Ross. Bruce has been here almost 22 years with the city, prior to, he worked for law enforcement over in Marion County area, but I want everybody to, if you get a chance to see Bruce, congratulate him. Job well done, he's been here, he serves the citizens very well, and I don't think that, to my knowledge, we have ever had a complaint on this officer of any magnitude or anything at all. He's always been one of those guys, you ask him to do something, and he, he jumped right out, he shouldn't have hit him, guy. I would like to congratulate him on his retirement.
Hate to see you.
Do you know, do you have a date?
It is August 31st.
Saturday will be his last day on duty, and with his time, it will be December, I think it's the 10th.
We will, we will get together, and we'll make sure that we, we have a little bit of life while we're in retirement, before we can definitely do that with our retirement system. Plenty of years of service in the city.
Excellent. Appreciate that very much, and at this time, there were no objections earlier, would like to, to hear from the good folks with retail strategies. It's I have a D, I have a good business. We're gonna go ahead and move you up, so you don't have to sit through all the other stuff.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Grabett. Justin Bass, very curious, Mr. Ram, thank you so much for sharing your song, very, very touching, very happy to be here. That done you? Okay. Done your lesson?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you for having me tonight, excited to be here, share with you what we've got going on. We have now been engaged with the city for a few months, for our retail recruitment plan and execution of that plan to actively recruit retail. And we have already gotten started, and I'm here to share with you what we are doing. So, we've had some technically, technical difficulties, so we are going old school with our packets here. So, this is called a strategic plan, I like to call it a starting point, because that's just what it is. Retail is ever-changing and ever-evolving, so we're constantly staying on top of the trends and what's happening. As it changes, the plan evolves with that. So, we'll start off with the research that we ran. We have seven different software subscriptions, and over half a million different variables, so we can run very, very in-depth specialized reports. We've run the basic ones that we typically look at for the, for the specific retail analysis, but we also have the capability to run specialized reports for your existing business owners, so that's something I would like to remind you guys of. Your local business owners want to know how to better manage their inventory, or know whether they should expand or relocate, we can provide them with that information included in this engagement. So, all of this research can move on to the pages of Basecamp. It's placed here in Basecamp. And again, this is, this is a higher-level version of what we're doing. We went in-depth with Mr. Williams and with Thad previously, so, so we can speak off the record, if you want to talk more specifics of who we're actually going to be reaching out to, who's been reaching out to. But all the reports and strategic plan, communication is kept in Basecamp, and it is password-protected, and I believe, Michael, I don't think you're on it, Thad is, okay, so the communication is running through Thad at this point. So, if you guys ever have any questions throughout the process, you can bubble them through him, and you can pop it in there, and we can converse that way. So, the demographic highlights, we have run your basic demos by drive time and radius range. The reason we've done that is because that's what retailers look for. Some of them look for drive, specific drive times, and some look at radius range, so we've got them both here. You can see we've done a 10, 15, and 20-minute drive time, and a 1, 3, and 5-mile radius range for your population, median household income there. And we have run it from the city center. We've played around with the, with the numbers to see if it, if they went up any by moving it over to the right, but it turns out your numbers do look the best in the city center, so that's what we've used. Moving on to the next, as retail tapestry segmentation, this is a report that retailers like to use to identify their core customer in your market. So, what this does is it essentially stereotypes your community and gives you a personality, if you will. There are 67 different segmentations within the tapestry report, so we did your top two dominant personality traits. And the first one is old and newcomers. The life mode group is middle ground, so it's middle age, or less than middle age, median age is 38.5. The number of households throughout the United States that are the old and newcomers are 2.7 million, and the median household income is 39,000. So, you can see the market profile down at the bottom. It basically is a good way for retailers to see what you guys do for fun, what types of vehicles do you prefer to drive, how do you get your news, is it through magazine or through the internet, how do you pay your bills? And this better helps them figure out who the core customer is, and how they should market to that customer. So, the old and newcomers, they, the residents are strong supporters of environmental organizations, entertainment features, the internet, the dating sites, and games, movies at home, they enjoy country music, newspapers, vehicles are basically just a means of transportation, food is featured on convenience, and lots of frozen food, and fast food is preferred. So, that's just a little snapshot there. The next page of demographic highlights, it shows the density, it's a little hard to see, but it's the density of the old and newcomer's personality trait throughout the United States. So, you can see it's pretty evenly spread out, with a little, you can see a heavier dot near the, near the east ridge area. Median household income is 39, as I said, and a little less than half on homeownership. And then the next page of occupations by earnings shows the median earnings versus the number of workers, and the types of jobs that they have. So, office and administrative support work is the highest, the most number of people have those types of jobs, followed by sales, related jobs, and management. Moving on to your second most dominant personality trait, that's the Roosevelt tradition, mainly your generation Xers. There's 2.6 million, roundabout, throughout the U.S. that communities that have Roosevelt traditional personalities. The average household size here is 2.46, with a median age of 38.4. The market profile, residents take advantage of convenience stores for fueling up and picking up incidentals, they watch television a lot, many households have more than four TVs. So, this is the type of thing, again, like I said, the specific programs that they watch, the channels that they watch, to know how to market to your residents. The next page, again, you've got the density map, and then the homeownership's a lot higher here, which is, which is a really strong number, and it's really good, because retailers like to see strong homeownership. And then again, the occupation by earnings is pretty similar, with office and administrative support work being the highest, followed by sales, production. So, the next segment is the gap analysis. This is one of the most critical pieces of the plan moving forward as we recruit. So, as you probably know, the gap analysis is also known as a linkage report, and it quantifies the dollars your residents are spending outside of your community. So, they're leaving to buy groceries, especially food, sporting goods. So, we're able to break it down by sector, and then it gives us more of a guideline of who we need to be targeting first and foremost to your community, because we want to recruit retailers that aren't going to cannibalize what you already have. And furthermore, retailers, they get the same exact data, and they look at it, and they want to know that you can support them, that your residents are going to be spending the doll, the dollars there for the store to stay in business and actually be profitable. So, your largest gaps, you can see, it's written both ways, in a pie chart and in the spreadsheet. We have supermarkets, specialty food stores, followed by sporting goods, nurseries, and gardens, electronics and appliance stores, and this is one example I want to call out of how data, data, data is data, and is not always logical. So, electronics and appliance stores usually pop up in these linkage reports, because people are buying these online, and it doesn't capture that. So, that's one that we, we usually take that under, under consideration. So, once we go through that gap analysis, we're able to, like I said, it gives us more of a, of a guideline of who to target. So, we also look at the industry, who's expanding, who's doing what. So, the next page, site selection process. 2014 new construction for last year. Construction is up, retail is up, deals are happening. It's really an exciting time to be focusing on retail because of that, getting ahead of that curve while the economy is up. And we're seeing that a lot of retailers are expanding, mostly being restaurants. Limited service and fast food are the most there. Retailers have opened 42,000 units last year, with 40% of that being restaurants. So, because of that, you're gonna see a lot of emphasis on recruiting restaurants, while you do have that as a gap, it's also looking for, we know they're doing business, they're opening new stores, so that's gonna be taken under consideration. So, we're seeing a lot of other types of sectors increasing as well, the, the stores that cater to the millennials and the baby boomers. So, children's apparel is up, a lot of the baby boomers are buying clothes for their grandchildren, and pet stores are up, because a lot of the baby boomers and millennials have pets to buy for. Even when the economy is bad, people aren't gonna get rid of their pets, they're still gonna feed them. So, who's not expanding is going to be the stores that sell products that you're gonna buy on Amazon or online. So, that's just to say, we're keeping track of what's going on in the industry, and taking that into consideration when we're recruiting. So, moving on, for retail expansion, this page, the formula for retail expansion, essentially what this is saying is that retailers are only going to open a location in your market if they're going to be profitable. So, the big key is to figure out what their numbers are, what your criteria is, and it's a big puzzle piece that we put together. So, since construction, retail is up, the cost of construction has gone up, and the cost that, or the amount that retailers are going to pay for support fee has gone down or stayed the same, that often leaves a bigger gap, so we're seeing a lot of new development happen because of public-private partnerships, as you guys probably know. So, we're seeing a lot of that happen. The next page, site selection process with the gears, this is basically just showing you that this is, site selection is a process. It's, it can be anywhere from 18 to 36 months from the time a retailer announces on Wall Street that they're expanding, to the time they actually break ground and have a ribbon cutting. So, it is a process, which is why we start off with a three-year engagement. We want it to be a forever partnership, but we do an initial three years, because that's about how long it takes to get things going. Year one is a lot of planting of the seeds and starting to get some traction, and years two and three is usually when we see our efforts come, come to fruition. So, the boots on the ground tour, our executives drove your market the way that a retailer would, and identified sites that are most desirable for retail. So, we keep an ongoing inventory of that, and again, this is the starting point, this is constantly changing, we stay on top of, you know, lands that has sold, bought, sold, here and there, it changes. So, we stand on top of what all of that is, so we've got some of these listed through here, and this is just an internal document that we keep on hand. And if there are ever, if there's anything that happens, say there's a piece of property that you, is not technically listed, and it's not for sale, you know, the owner would be willing to sell it, that's something you can communicate with us. You guys are the local experts, we're the national retail experts. So, if something like that happens locally on the ground, we want to know about it. So, that's something that you can communicate through Thad to communicate to us. So, we put together aerials. We always make the joke that retailers like to look at pictures, they don't We always make the joke that retailers like to look at pictures they don't like to read. It's really an easy way for them to get a snapshot of what's going on in your community. So, we've plotted all of the existing retailers here and traffic counts. And then we've also internally, if you flip over, you can see the little, the numbers in the little blue circles. We've plotted your top focus properties just for us to be able to start connecting those dots. And then the third aerial is, you can see the shaded areas, the redevelopment zones and new development zones, which will be taking different approaches. So, there's certain developers in the industry who focus specifically on redevelopment and then there's ones who focus on new development. And there's some who do focus. So, the retail prospects. We have been working hard contacting these retailers on your behalf, landowners and brokers and developers. And we have a lot of really good traction. We can't discuss it because this is a public meeting, but we do have some really exciting traction. I will say that. And I'll be happy to communicate with you guys later on that note. So, the recruitment process, we have a team of retail recruiters in-house. And what their full-time job is, just a refresher, I know you guys know this, but they are calling, they're looking at your property catalog, they're looking at what you guys have as far as your demographics. And they look at the prospect list and they're calling other retailers and developers and landowners and really just working hard to be an advocate for your community. So, one of the things that we do for recruitment is we represent you at all the ICSC shows. We have Las Vegas, the big show in May, which there were 32,000 people there, almost a million square feet of exhibitor space. And the most upcoming one we have is in October, it's the Southeastern Show in Atlanta. And that's always a really productive show for us. It's usually next to the Vegas show, this is the next best one, the next best attended in the southeast. It's all the key players in the southeast that are going to be there. So, we're going to start working the next few weeks to be setting up meetings for that. And we'll be having meetings on behalf of East Ridge there. We overcome objections by effectively creatively showing expansion opportunities. We connect with landowners, as I said, this is just an overview of our processes. We leverage our relationships as we travel and go to these conferences. We're building and developing relationships with the key industry players in order to get them to answer our phone call and call us back and email us back when we put your information in front of them. We're communicating with the local real estate professionals and initiating new conversations all the time. So, the next page, you'll see the map of the U.S. Those are where the ICSC conferences are located. And you might wonder, you know, why do I care if you're going to a show in Chicago? How does that benefit East Ridge? Well, the real estate managers who do deals in Tennessee are also attending all of these shows because it's just an industry show. So, they're going to be in New York, they're going to be in Dallas, they're going to be in Orlando. So, we go to all these shows and we meet with them on behalf of you guys there throughout the year. The next slide shows a picture of our booth from Las Vegas where we have all of our fantastic meetings, followed by your team. We have a team of 35 people who work for retail strategies. We're very rapidly growing, it's really exciting. But these are the people who are going to have direct contact with the city of East Ridge. The top four are the executives, followed by client management and recruitment team, and then the marketing and research team. And then finally, your marketing guide. This is what we use. We take these to the conferences. A lot of times, oftentimes, they're delivered electronically just because people at these conferences don't want to keep up with papers and they always end up in the trash. So, but what we use this for is we shoot them over to the brokers and the developers and the retailers because it really has all of the information that they're looking for together in one consolidated piece. You've got your drive times, your radius rings, where you are on the map of the state, your demographic snapshot, quick facts, your economic drivers, including schools and employers, your top focus properties, and then your gap analysis. And then on the flip side, it will have the aerial of all your existing retail. So, that is a very brief snapshot of our starting point, of what we're doing, our processes, how it worked. And we're really, really excited about working with you guys and getting some retail to locate East Ridge. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions you guys have.
Where's your shovel, Will?
I'm totally twenty-seven. Are you guys attending? I think you are, Michael, didn't I?
I ain't talking, I'm not talking about it. I talked about all this, the shovel, y'all, you're going to...
Oh, yes, yes.
And we get sourdough from y'all.
Can you what?
And we get sourdough from y'all and y'all pay us. I won't do it.
Well, if I...
Who's on your truck seat, you like to be in Las Vegas?
If I didn't have money in Vegas, I might help you out.
I just thought.
Thank you very much, I have. It's been a little while, that may be a month and a half or so. But Ted passed along a couple of little things that had been communicated for people all. And it was pretty encouraging and I was pretty happy with that. So, I would definitely encourage anyone on council to understand to reach out and talk about some of the things that, some of the opportunities that lay ahead. Think you'll be, think you'll be pleased with me. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Appreciate you.
Wouldn't like to get, if we could, these maps. If we could make these available, they're in the back, I guess, for the thank you page. If we could make those available in different areas. Yeah, have some out here at the front desk and maybe some down in Jordan, places where people can see them. And we got a link on the city's website, their website?
I'm not sure. We're actually looking at some different options with the website. We ran into a few bumps with one address I'd rather do that with, that's more of what he is familiar with. Design models, they probably don't need anybody at all. I think we really could, we'd get out on the website like that and get down in these different neighborhood papers. Also, the arena, you know, the arena, we've got all the different organizations coming through, different groups and stuff like that. People from out of town. Soccer, soccer is a very expensive sport. It has a different kind of clientele. But a lot of these people come from all over the country, come here by soccer management. Maybe some red operating is that option.
That's a great point. And I can ship you guys that of them for you to place around. And also, a great point on the website. We have a handful of communities that have incorporated a retail tab in their website that I can share with you guys just to get an idea of what it looks like. I think it's really been a must because when a retailer, you know, is thinking about a market, the first thing they're going to do is we will be on your website. So, if this type of information is there, I think that's just one more thing that would be beneficial to help you out. Great point. Any more questions?
Excellent, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
You're in Birmingham?
Yes.
Stop by, break me a honey pie next time.
No, you... Roll tape.
Honey's Pie, Honey's Barbecue, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. No, Honey's Barbecue, yeah. One of their chocolate pies. It's $22, I think. All right, we will go back to, we'll go back to old business. Item A, ordinance number 994. Ordinance number 994, an ordinance to the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee to amend ordinance number 989 entitled, an ordinance to provide revenue for the city of East Ridge, Tennessee for the fiscal year until July 1, 2015, June 30, 2016, appropriating the same to payment of expenses of municipal government by changing the revenue of the general fund, designating a portion of the fund balance to the State Street Aid Fund by changing the expenditures of the general fund, State Street Aid Fund, and Capital Projects Fund. Thank you, sir. This is before us on second final reading.
I'd like to get a legal aspect on this thing. What is read, and I vote for highest vote first reading. I've got that covered. It's in the minutes, but I'm 488. I'm going to stand a lot, so. And I can find this last day out, the capital. Kind of, but we're going to be voting on changing budget. Capital Projects Fund wasn't put in the first reading. It's come out of, so we voted on, everybody but the Capital Projects Fund. He's added to this fund.
Actually, you can amend this, the budget up until it is passed. If you remember, when you passed the budget, the second reading of the annual budget, you amended it that night. You can amend it right up until you pass it.
That's why I tried to get a legal button out here. We've only voted on it once.
Right.
And now we're adding Capital Projects Funds. I suspect we're going to vote on that once. I'm not voting on Capital Projects Funds twice. I was changing the budget tonight again, after the budget's done been voted on there.
That'll have the full text of the, that we looked at at first reading.
The only thing that has changed is when we inserted per Mr. Demoski's instruction to add to the expenditures and the Capital Projects Fund. That was the only thing that was added.
I think, I think we've done it in the past.
Oh, oh, it historically does, but you know that.
And we discussed that.
Historically does, but you know, when you're changing the dollar signs.
Technically, the ordinance itself has to be read the second time and voted on the second time. Now, from the first reading to the second reading, the items inside the ordinance can change. It's still, when you pass it, when you pass the ordinance on the second reading, then all of it, all of it is approved, regardless of whether it's new information or old information. I'm not saying that's necessarily the way it ought to be done, but that is the way it's done frequently. And the budget was an example of that, that we passed. We passed it on first reading and it was very vanilla. And then we came back and made changes like the salary increases for employees. That was not in the first budget, but it did get passed for the second reading of the budget. So, so there are things that change from first reading to second reading. It's legal and there's nothing wrong with it. Now, whether, whether you agree with it or not is...
It says second final reading. And over here, it says second final reading. And it's got the Capital Projects Fund. And we're over here at the first final, first reading without it. And that's, that's why I tried to get a legal answer.
Is this something that has to be voted on tonight? Or can we pass this and let legal take a look at it and come back with an opinion at our next meeting?
And I can also give you the opinion from impact because I had taken that question to our financial consultant with them before we were at Vegas with them. I'll be glad to get that information.
It can wait two weeks?
Yes, sir, there's no problem with that.
Oh, no, that's my suggestion. If, if, if we want to take a motion, take it. Okay, we're going to take it to the next meeting. We have, sorry, we have a second. We have a motion and a second to take. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garette?
Yes.
Councilmember Pagel?
Yes.
Councilmember Nadya?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Your language?
Yes. An item is tabled. Item B is Resolution Number 2503. And we're not, we're not going to vote on this again. We just need confirmation and hopefully good recollection of who made the motion and who made the second because apparently it did come through on the audio.
I do not recall, but I'll make the motion. I mean, it sounds like it might be easier for us just to redo it again. Yeah, it was five oh, so.
Does anyone want to take credit for making the motion and making the second? I mean, that would be...
Minin.
I'll take Minin, take mine.
Okay. That sounds good.